Hello and welcome to represent NYC election coverage from Manhattan Neighborhood Network. I'm Ben Max, your host and the executive editor of Gotham Gazette. Today, we're pleased to bring you a debate in the general election for City Council District Six. This district includes much of the Upper West Side of Manhattan. I'll soon introduce you to the two candidates who will be on the ballot and are joining us here for this debate. Voting in this race and the others on the general election ballot will be done through absentee balloting, the early voting period of October 23rd through October 31st, and Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Along with City Council also on the ballot this fall are contests for Borough President, District Attorney, Controller, Public Advocate, and Mayor, and others. There are also five yes or no ballot questions for constitutional amendments that we'll discuss in a separate show, and you should be ready to vote on. But today, we're focused on the City Council and who will be the next member representing District Six, which has been represented by City Council Member Helen Rosenthal for the last nearly eight years. She was unable to seek reelection due to term limits. The City Council member is a position that includes key responsibilities and powers around constituent services, local problem solving, legislating, budgeting, making land use decisions, and still more. So with me today for this general election debate in City Council District Six are Gail Brewer, the Democratic Party nominee, and Nancy Sliwa, the Republican Party nominee. Thank you both for being here. So it's an important time of choosing here in New York City, and we're pleased to bring you this debate and other debates and interviews with candidates for office in the general election here in 2021. We hope they're helpful to you as you make your choices and get ready to vote in the general election. So briefly, we have just two candidates for this debate. So the rules are that they'll go back and forth answering my questions after they give one-minute opening statements, and we'll go back and forth and have an open discussion about a number of issues important to this district and the city until we get to closing statements of one minute towards the end of our half hour. All right, let's get started here. For opening statements of one minute, we're going to start with Gail Brewer, then move to Nancy Sliwa. Gail Brewer, over to you.
Thank you very much, Ben Max. As you know, I am running for the City Council on the Upper West Side. I'm aware that this is not a normal path for somebody who's currently the Borough President of Manhattan. But as I think many people know, the West Side is in my bones. I've lived and worked here for many, many years. I've raised kids here, and I think I've helped to build a diverse and caring community in the last, I hate to say, 30 years that I've been doing this work. My proudest moment, people say, "Why are you running?", is because I believe government should do what government is paid to do. That's why I ran in the very first place. And I think by doing a couple of things, I put high schoolers on community boards, parents on community education councils, I've appointed women and people of color everywhere. And when I was in the City Council, I started the District Office on 87th Street, which is what you're supposed to do. But what I did as Borough President is I moved the District Office to the street, to the storefront. I believe in constituent services should be where the people are. That's a proud moment. I have been endorsed by about, I don't know, over 30 labor unions, a wide array of other organizations, and all the West Side political clubs, the Tenants' Pact, the Snowmaw Democratic Club, League of Conservation Voters, voters for animal rights. So I think that's an example of what I have done and what I could do. Thank you very much.
We'll get into a lot of details here in just a minute. Nancy Sliwa, over to you for an opening statement.
Well, I want to first of all just thank you for the opportunity to take part in this debate, and I'll reach out to your viewing audience. I've lived in the Upper West Side for almost nine years now, and what I've seen in the nine years is a massive decline in the quality of life. In the past couple of years in particular, I've seen firsthand crime on the streets. I've seen those most in need of help, the homeless people, wandering the streets with nothing to do. And it got me thinking, well, why would it be that I want to get involved right now? And on a philosophical level, I really think that you need to be concerned with how your government's representing you and why I've been disappointed in governments in the past and why it is that I think that officials don't really represent who it is that I am. The old adage of "your voice is heard at the polls", well, it really goes well beyond that because you need to be much more proactive. And the way that you'll feel that you can change the community is if you're actually out there doing things and seeing a difference. That's how you know you can change it. Now, I'm sure a lot of my own, my platforms and beliefs, I hopefully will get fleshed out during this debate. But on a very basic standpoint, I have like a three-point platform, which I think would really help people get much more engaged in the political process, and I think represents what a City Council member should be doing, which is, number one, hosting.
Let's come back to the minute. But no, that's where we're heading. That's great. So let's come back to you, Gail Brewer. Top priorities, if you're re-elected to the City Council after your hiatus as Borough President? If you come back to the City Council in January, what would be your two or three top priorities going into the council, whether it's for something in the district or legislation citywide? Top priorities for you if you win this election? Go ahead.
I'd say from the very beginning is public safety. That hasn't changed when I ran for the, in the primary, I said that, and I say that now. And that includes the quality of life issues as well as what the police do. I am for more police, I'm for policing, and I'm for mental health services. That is number one. Number two, my kids are grown, but the schools need a lot of help. So I would say number two is finding a way that there are after-school mental health, social workers, nurses, and high academic standards in the schools. And number three, although it's not everybody's number three, is the arts. I believe that between the arts and open space, that brings the kind of support that New York City needs economically, personally, and obviously for the artists. Those would be my three top priorities.
Let me ask you about your statement earlier on "for more police". What do you mean by that?
Well, I'm just saying I don't support defunding the police. I have strong feelings, even in transit as an example, where I feel that more police officer on the platforms in the subway cars would be helpful. I am not for arresting in massive, but I am for saying this is a deterrent. Police are deterrent to crime.
And are there any changes to policing, accompanying more police presence that you would be seeking? Do you think things have been heading in the right direction in terms of how the police interact with the public? Anything you'd be pushing for as you call for more police presence in the district?
I'm 100% supportive of mental health workers and social workers accompanying the police. It's taking place in a couple of precincts now, the 2-5, the 2-3, and it's very successful. The police are not social workers, and you need both. So I would say that in every single case where there is a mental health or some kind of a homeless situation, you absolutely have to have mental health support at the same time. It's working. It is making a big difference. We cannot do policing out of this situation that we're in.
All right, I want to come back to your comments on education in a minute, but let's go to Nancy Sliwa for your just jumping into it earlier, your main three priorities of your campaign. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, so actually, I'll condense those into sort of one thing, which I would really state is really just community outreach in terms of being the, as a public servant, you need to be the voice of the people. So as much as I have ideas and beliefs in terms of what I want to do, what you're supposed to do is represent the voice of the people. So I would have weekly town hall meetings where three-fourths of those weeks would be the constituents talking to me and telling me their concerns. Too often, I've been to public hearings, public events where the political person comes in, they say what they want to say, and they leave. And it misses the point of hearing the feedback of what the people are trying to tell you. Once a month, I would do Q and A, so directly they can ask me questions and also bring into their attention what legislation is upcoming, what it is that I'd be thinking of suggesting to get their feedback. Because again, the transparency is not just in telling people what you're doing, it's also in letting them know before you do it, because again, you're supposed to be representing them. In terms of safety, obviously, super big priority. I mean, safety has gone downhill. We have businesses who are now functioning in a lot of ways with outdoor facilities. We have, again, the homeless shelters that have been moved in with not a lot of transparency. That's an issue.
What would you do about public safety? How do you address that? We heard Ms. Brewer say more police presence.
I absolutely agree with refunding the police. I think this idea that we're trying to slowly remove their presence, we're trying to take their powers away from them and make them much more reactive, that doesn't make any sense. We do have this revolving system where people are getting arrested, they're coming right back out and doing the same exact crimes, and that's making law-abiding citizens prisoners of their own apartments. That's ridiculous. So there's a little bit too much deference being given to protecting the rights of the criminal. I mean, that's, I think it's really gone too far absurd. Also with the idea of closing Rikers Island, I think that's something that's completely, should be off the table. We have already the community jail in Manhattan Borough, which is being referenced to be, to go to Chinatown, and there's massive opposition. So people don't want that there. We don't have the money to build them in the first place. We can rehab current existing facilities. So again, I think it's a combination of making sure that the criminal justice system, the DA's office, they're actually treating these crimes seriously. They're not letting the people out. This is something that can be easily addressed.
Also, just quickly, when you say rehab current facilities, you're talking about just...
Yeah, in Rikers Island, there's certainly some, yeah. Yeah, there's certainly some facilities which need to be knocked down, but then there's other facilities which can be rehabbed. And also, what you can do is you can move, since most of the people who are being held there, it's usually, you know, they're not going through a long case system. You can have the arraignment courts directly on Rikers Island. Now, the only one that's going to inconvenience is the attorneys who have to go there.
When you say they should ensure that people are not being let out, you're talking about bail, I assume?
Exactly.
Clarify what your position is on that, because there's obviously a lot of debate about when certain alleged offenders should be eligible for bail, who should be kept behind bars pre-trial. Can you sort of succinctly clarify your position on bail?
Well, I certainly think that non-violent offenses is something that should be available for, you know, people being able to be let out on bail. But the minute you start talking about something where someone is using violence, anything of that nature, you really need to seriously look at it, because people do need help. It's not just protecting the people, it's helping the people who are committing these crimes.
Well, one of the issues, just quickly to finish this part of the conversation, one of the issues around even using bail, cash bail for non-violent offenses is that many people who have bail set can't afford it. And that's part of the reason that there's been this movement to reduce or remove cash bail for especially non-violent offenses.
Oh, absolutely. But to your point, when you're talking about non-violent offenses, I think that's a whole different, that's a whole different question. And that's something where we need, I mean, the legal system needs to start recognizing those important, the important distinction between those crimes. What's happening is people are being let out without even being evaluated. So for instance, if we just use the standard of, well, you didn't do anything too serious, but there's reason to think that that person maybe needs to be reviewed on an emotional level. They may need help, and we're letting those people back out. So it's an overall lack of compassion and caring.
Thank you. Gail Brewer, let me ask you about this question about closing Rikers Island and building the new jail in Lower Manhattan to replace the jail that's currently there. What's your current stance on that plan, which is moving ahead? It's been a little bit delayed, but it's moving ahead as passed by the City Council this past term. What's your current stance on the future of that plan?
Well, I have a record. I'm 100% supportive of closing Rikers Island, turning it into a climate-positive island in terms of wastewater treatment and other solar panel manufacturing, et cetera. There are a lot of plans for that. I signed off, as you probably know, on the ULP for the building in Chinatown. I was one of the persons who brought together the community. I've had a Rikers Island task force. Perhaps the building could be smaller. There could be some tweaks in terms of its design. But I'm 100% supportive of jails in the boroughs, not on Rikers Island. So we do differ on that topic. The other thing I want to just mention though is, go ahead, go ahead, Ben.
No, please, go ahead.
I was going to say, I am supportive of the state and what they have done in terms of bail reform. I would add something. I believe strongly, I've had 35 foster care kids. Many of them went to Rikers. I know very well what it's like when you come out of Rikers and you don't have a lot of support. So the Midtown Court, this would be a very specific suggestion, has funding and programs where when somebody comes out of Rikers, or even before they go to Rikers, they don't get bail, thank goodness, but they're going back to a family, or they're going back to somewhere that's not very supportive. That person could use support. That's what Midtown Court should be doing, and they have the funding to do that, and we're not using that funding to support those individuals. I agree with Nancy. We've got to have more support for these individuals. I've had personal experience with this. So I would say keep the bail reform as it is, but give a whole lot of support to those who should not be getting bail, but still need support.
Let me ask you, Ms. Brewer, and I want to come back to you with the same question, Ms. Sliwa. It's something that you've both brought up, which is constituent services, hearing from the members of your district. If you're elected to represent this district, you want to get that constituent feedback, you want to provide those services. A lot of being a City Council member doesn't just happen at City Hall legislating and deciding budgets. It's about constituent services, as you both laid out. But Ms. Brewer, how do you make sure that you get a good sense of what your constituents want and you're not only listening to the people who have the time to show up at a community board meeting or who know how to access, you know, the resources or know how to be the squeaky wheel? How do you make sure you have a good sense of what your constituents, you know, what's really popular among your many constituents as a City Council member?
Well, I'm known for constituent services. A woman came up to me recently, said, "34 years ago, you helped me save my apartment." So I am definitely known for that. I have always had town halls. I've always had at least six-day-a-week constituent office open sometimes, seven days a week, and also every single constituent response is needed. You can't, you know, some and not the others, whether you agree or disagree. I have, you know, all kinds of social media, webpage, all kinds of social media that people reach me on. They have my home address, my home cell. They have every aspect, perhaps more transparent than any other elected official in the five boroughs. At the same time, the way you get, you get those who are not the squeaky wheel and who make all is it, you are visible in the community. That's how you get that. You go to places where there isn't a community board meeting, where there isn't a school board meeting, and you show up at that small gathering. That's what I do. And that's how you hear the non-squeaky wheels.
And quickly, you mentioned as Borough President, your current position, appointments to community boards. Obviously, the Borough Presidents work with City Council members on many of those appointments. What's your assessment of where it stands now in terms of ensuring that community boards are representative of the districts they are speaking for? How is that right now, and what would you do to continue to improve that if you moved back to the City Council?
Well, as Borough President, I certainly looked at the demographics of the area and match it in the appointments. We're the first Borough President to do that, and then the City Council mandated it, and it's all on our website, and it's public information. That was not true necessarily in the past in other boroughs and maybe less true in Manhattan, but it is now true. Number two is you have to do outreach in order to get that demographics to be matched. You can't just say, "We're going to be appointments." So we did massive outreach, massive training, massive working with, you know, the business community doing training, the unions doing training, obviously with social services doing training, and of course, my favorite, young people, 16-years-old on the community boards. That was my law. So I think that's how you go about it.
Ms. Sliwa, let's hear from you on this. You talked about having town halls. How do you ensure, even if you're doing a lot of that, good outreach and constituent services? How do you ensure that you're getting a really good sample of your, you know, many tens of thousands of constituents if you're a City Council member, and you really get the pulse of the district?
It does rely upon people being proactive. So again, you can only elicit as much as they're willing to give. But to Gail's point, being out in the community is important. So I'm walking around the community. All of these years that I've been here, I've had people come up to my husband and myself, and they're more than willing to tell you about what is of interest to them and what they're experiencing, what type of help that they need. I also believe that because we have such a looming fiscal deficit, that we're going to have to do more with less. And I advocate, once a month, doing volunteer opportunities organized by the Community Council Office. And also, that's another way that you'll be able to solicit the feedback. If someone sees something done in your community and they say, "Well, how come that wasn't done? Or how come you're not addressing this?" Well, the more you interact, the more that that will be addressed. So it's a lot of give and take, but I think that's how it should be. You know, I'm not acting in an office insular to myself. The more proactive you are with me, the more I can do for you.
All right. So let's come back to you, Ms. Brewer. You mentioned education, schools. Obviously, in this district and around the city, there's huge issues for families, parents, guardians, students. What would be your top priorities on schools? And how as a City Council member, do you try to influence the Department of Education and the mayor? This is one area where the City Council has, you know, limited powers for policymaking, but obviously, City Council members can also really have an impact in terms of what happens in their districts and the attention that issues get to the schools in their districts. So what would be the top priorities for you addressing issues at the schools in the district? And how do you, how do you make the changes happen that your constituents want when education is such a, you know, has mayoral control of city schools and such a powerful Department of Education?
Well, I would just say, don't forget the budget, because, you know, right now, the City Council and the mayor decide the budget. And in that case, much more power goes to the council in that case, because I'm concerned in a positive, but I also want to say negative way with massive amounts of federal money coming to the schools right now, and how long will that last? So that's an issue where, to be honest with you, you do have a lot of control over the schools, because when there is less of this federal money, what will be your priorities in terms of education? And in terms of this year, the City Council added, of course, the social workers and other mental health support. That's a budget issue and a policy issue, and it came from the City Council. So there is quite a bit that you can do. I would say my priority would be that there is enough teachers, enough support staff, enough devices. God forbid that we end up with another mini pandemic of some kind, and we have to go back to some kind of remote, and then, of course, after-school. You've got to have, in my opinion, many more, what I would call wraparound services in the schools. That may not be true of every single school, but you need more wraparound for so many. I can tell you many examples where kids don't have food, don't have clean clothes. You actually wash their dryers in a lot of schools. So I think when I say what would be my priority would be figuring out what are the wraparound services that every child needs in order to succeed.
You brought up remote school. We're talking here, early October. The vaccine mandate has just gone into effect for school personnel. There's definitely, you know, a lot of moving parts here. Do you think it was a mistake for the city to not have a remote school option for parents to enroll, parents and guardians to enroll their children, their students, in full-time remote school to start this year? Or do you think the mayor made the right decision trying to get as many kids into school buildings as possible?
I'm 100% for everybody being vaccinated, as many kids as possible in the school. However, there are parents who are not going to send their kids. And I had two schools already where there were close downs. In one case, it was children with special needs. In that case, great principal, she had stockpiled devices, and she only needed 14. So there is a lot of intelligence from the principals about how to deal with these remotes. But we have to think about the future. Is this going to happen again? God, I hope no. But just in case, we actually on the West Side have quite a few classrooms that are closed. If you look at the map and the schools. So do we have the right remote for those classrooms? You know, it's not just the entire district. It could be a classroom, or it could be a school. You have to be ready. That academic opportunity has to continue. Are the teachers ready? Are the students ready? Is the internet ready? Is the device ready? And of course, I think we're going to end up with devices and remote in one way or another into the future. Are we thinking about the future?
Ms. Sliwa, your education priorities, obviously, schools, such a concern among constituents in every City Council district. What's your sense of what folks in this City Council district want you to have as top priorities on education, schools, if you're elected to the City Council, and what would be your top priorities?
Well, first of all, I think that certainly the schools are in many ways failing the students. And the fact, I mean, the fact that teachers have to even buy their own supplies for students, I think is evidence of the money being wasted. We have a lot of parents who want to send their kids to private schools, to charter schools. And even though this is something that needs to have it on a state level, I would absolutely be advocating right away to have the caps lifted for the amount of charter schools in the area. Because when you have thousands of students waiting for hundreds of seats, there's something wrong, and the people really have spoken, so they want the charter schools. I'm also a big advocate of vocational training. I mean, not every child wants to go to school, higher education, and that's not necessary for a lot of jobs. So one example I could think of that would be very pertinent is with an aging society, there's many more healthcare workers that are in demand. We don't have a lot of young people who are being trained to do that. They can be trained to do that. There are people who can stay at home. They have a better quality of life. It costs less. And yet, here we have this gap to fill with having people who can come into your homes and take care of you. So why would we not start incorporating more of that vocational training and allow kids to graduate from school without having a huge debt behind them and be able to be productive right away in the workforce?
Ms. Brewer, this is, as Ms. Sliwa said, a state issue, but city elected officials do express their opinions and try to lobby their colleagues. What do you think about the charter school cap? New York City has hit the cap. Do you think it should be extended, kept as is?
I am not for extending the charter school cap. I sued success when they moved into Brandeis High School as an example. I thought that should be 100% high schools and not have an elementary school in there. So we want to support our traditional public schools. There are, charter schools are supposed to go where there is need for experiment or need for schools that aren't up to par, particularly on the West Side. We have a lot of really good schools, and we should be supporting them. So that would be my answer to that question.
All right, we're getting close to closing statements here, but a couple other quick questions first. Ms. Sliwa, let me ask you this. The Upper West Side, this district you're trying to represent, you're a Republican nominee. It's obviously a famously heavily Democratic district. How do you reach across the aisle in order to win this election? You'd have to convince many, many Democrats to vote for you. What's your message to voters in terms of trying to convince them to reach across the aisle and do so?
Well, certainly, I would hope that people would vote for me based upon what it is that I believe and what they believe that I can do for them. I think there's much more divisiveness in our society than should be. And to be honest, I, you know, I actually voted for Bernie Sanders. Well, I remint, but I showed up at the convention in Philadelphia. I was upset when that happened. I mean, I'm not a traditional Republican, I guess you would say. And I don't think that I should be judged according to that designation next to my name. But at the same time, you want people to come out and vote for you because they believe in you. So I do think that it's a little bit of a disservice if people, you know, box themselves in when the reality is, I don't consider myself to be a boxed individual. I'm open to every idea. I don't look at people that way. I don't judge people that way, so I'd hope they wouldn't do the same to me.
And Ms. Brewer, one final question for you before we move to closing statements. What do you say to those who, and this came up in the Democratic primary for this race, of course, as well? What do you say to those who worry that your vision for the district, your vision for Manhattan isn't quite forward-looking enough, isn't quite open to advancing, you know, sort of moving ahead with more housing that the borough needs and the district needs, changing the streetscape more, and that, you know, you tend more to, you know, to listen to more of the sort of older, longtime residents of the district and not some of the newer, younger members of the district? What do you say to folks that have that criticism?
Okay. Well, I would say, for instance, particularly on affordable housing, I am supportive of as much permanent supportive housing as possible, taking some of these SROs and hotels and converting them to permanent supportive housing run by nonprofits. I want to make that really clear as a priority. But I would say that one of the issues that I focus on me about is new ideas for streetscape, for the arts, for the schools, for housing, they have to get implemented. And that's where I come in. In other words, I've almost heard every idea in the world, but not all. And climate control is certainly something that we've got to focus on. We're not doing well. And so I have lots of ideas for that, so do others. But how do you actually get it done as opposed to talking? And with a new mayor and with new council members and new government, I think it'd be good to have somebody who knows how to implement these great ideas.
All right, we're moving into our one-minute closing statements. We're going to start with Ms. Sliwa, go to Ms. Brewer for the last word. You have one minute to make your closing pitch, at least for this debate. We obviously couldn't touch on many, many issues in a relatively short time, but people can find you both and ask you questions or look on your websites. But for this debate and this time together, Ms. Sliwa, your closing statement. Go ahead.
I wish there was more time to talk about the different ideas. But as already mentioned, I mean, I have been in this neighborhood a long time. I love this neighborhood. I want to see the best for this neighborhood. I do feel that one of the problems that happens is when you get entrenched politicians, you do get a lot of the same old, same old. And I don't think that's how politics is supposed to work. You should have new ideas. You should have new people coming in. We have some of the best and brightest living in our city. So to think that only certain people can continue to be in that position doesn't make any sense to me. I'm very excited about listening to people. I'm very excited about making this a better place. I've helped out with the homeless feeds when COVID first happened. I care about all of the residents who live in this community. I have direct experience on the ground doing stuff through my volunteerism. And I think that by leading by example, teaching people that they can get involved, they can make a change. This will inspire more people to want to run for office, and I think that's what we really want. And I think that's what we really want. We want a really more vibrant, you know, city and community.
Thank you. And Ms. Brewer, over to you for your closing statement.
Well, thank you very much to you, Ben Max, and to Manhattan Neighborhood Network. I think what I am bringing to this discussion and hopefully to the city council is this deep expertise in government. I want to tackle the big issues, and I want to get ideas implemented. That's always been a challenge. We've got to improve the quality of life, as I said, public safety. We've got to figure out how to get out of this pandemic because it is still very much a challenge. You saw today's front page of The Times talking about one neighborhood in Manhattan that has huge vacant storefronts, and other towns that we face on the Upper West Side. But more importantly, make government work for everyone. That's where I come in. I think we can make our streets safer. I think we can find homeless housing that's permanent. We obviously are figuring out how to deal with climate change, and perhaps our hardest challenge is housing affordability. So we can do it together. I do believe very strongly in being at as many events as possible, having constituents available to me and listening to their ideas, figuring out how to do with transportation, open streets. There's a lot of good that came out of the last couple of years, and there's a lot of bad. And I hope to have the opportunity to work with my colleagues, new and old, in the city council and in government to solve some of these problems. I hope you vote for me in November 2nd. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that's Gail Brewer, the Democratic nominee for City Council District 6, and Nancy Sliwa, the Republican nominee for City Council District 6. Thank you both for participating in this debate. And thank you for watching, represent NYC election coverage. I hope this debate is helpful to you as you prepare to vote in the fall general election. This race and others are on the ballot, so be ready to vote. And key decisions are coming up for all of us and the future of this city. So we hope you're ready to vote when the time comes. I'm Ben Max. See you next time.